We are starting our, we're opening our Board of Education meeting. Our regularly scheduled March 26th meeting. We're a little late because the policy meeting ran a little long. So, we are very happy to have everyone working very hard here. So, we have a call to order. We have public audience. Would anyone like to speak? Excellent, moving on. We're going into Board Administrative Communications. Valerie Lee, our new member, we'd love to hear from you again. You're so good at getting all the information from every school.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I have a bit of information. I think we had a budget meeting two weeks ago, so we missed one of our meetings, so I have quite a bit. From the Simsbury Public Library, they're wondering, "Do you take amazing photos?" Students are urged to take part in the Teen Photo Challenge for ages 12 to 19 years old. The kickoff was the first week of March, but it's not limited to Simsbury residents. You can drop off your images from April 1st to the 20th, and winners are going to be selected and notified on April 26th. Friday, March 8th was the date for the first-ever Evening with Friends hosted by the Simsbury Friends for Music and Performing Arts at the Simsbury Inn. It was a wonderful night for all of those in attendance. Tooten Hills extends congratulations to 6th grade students on their amazing performance at the Schoolhouse Rock Live Junior. It was an amazing presentation. At Tooten Hills on Monday, April 1st, Lizzie Rockwell will meet grades K through 2. Over the past few years, Lizzie has formed a wonderful relationship with Tooten Hills. She's an incredible author, researcher, and artist. She also has an amazing demeanor with the students, so they're looking forward to that visit. At Tooten Hills on April 2nd, Pamela Tuck will be meeting with grades 3 through 6. She's also a talented author and has interesting, inspiring stories to share. Her talent and love for writing is contagious as well, so she's hoping to get the students really interested. Her books are also going to be available for purchase. At Terrifil, on Friday, March 1st, they conducted their Stop, Drop &amp; Read event in honor of Dr. Seuss's birthday. They're also taking part in the Relay for Life. It's a major fundraiser for the American Cancer Society, which supports the research and patient services functions for the, so that, like, for the whole society. Last year, with the help of Terrifil's 5th and 6th grade students, the 2018 Relay for Life helped to raise $625,000 to support the work of the American Cancer Society. This year's relay will be held on May 18th, and relay teams can be formed at any time, but the opportunity to participate in the relay and to form teams was presented to Terrifil, the 5th and 6th graders, on March 7th. Terrifil Elementary School students and their parents are to be congratulated for their continuing support of the American Cancer Society. Join Terrifil for their second annual trivia night. This was a blast, and they would love to see even more people come to enjoy it next year. All proceeds go right back to enhancing the school for the students. The event was at Oldwell Tavern on March 29th. Oh, sorry, no, it's still coming up, not done yet, with trivia starting at 7:30. Come early to enjoy dinner. There's going to be food and drinks that they're not included, but, like, in the cover price, but they're delicious, so definitely make a night out of it and go get some food. It's 25 per person and 40 for a couple. And lastly, Terrifil invites the people to come cheer on their 6th graders as they compete in the annual basketball game against the faculty. This is always a fun event, which includes the 5th grade pep band, including the National Anthem, a DJ, and Simsbury Spinner's halftime show. There are pizza and treats for dinner, fun games, and a 50/50 raffle with a special guest. The game is scheduled for Wednesday, April 17th, with a tip-off at 5:30. Onto Central. They had their talent show on Friday, March 1st. Their students did a fantastic job with the show and were able to showcase some of their amazing talents. Also, on Friday, March 1st, Central conducted their also, they had another Stop, Drop &amp; Read event, as well as the other elementary schools. Central School had their first night out at Iron Horse on Thursday, March 14th. They're also excited to share that they will be participating in the Look for the Good Project gratitude campaign again this year. The Central School community will participate in a two-week gratitude campaign created by the Look for the Good Project. The campaign begins with a kickoff assembly on April 15th and will conclude April 26th. Throughout the campaign, students will focus on positive thinking and all the things that they have been grateful for. Central has their academic fair on Thursday, April 4th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Students from all grade levels may participate by entering a project in the fair or by attending the fair with their families. Students may work individually or in small groups. They're looking forward to some wonderful exhibits this year and hope to have many participants. Teachers will be handing out guidelines and registration forms for the fair tomorrow, and if you are interested in participating, please fill out the registration form and hand it in to your teacher by March 22nd. So, already, but, um, they are hoping to have a really good turnout for that, and they're interested to see what the students come up with. The Central Schools 5th and 6th grade students are invited to participate in a mini Relay for Life as well. The Relay for Life is the American Cancer Society again and supports the research, and they're looking forward to the participation from that elementary school as well. For Latimer, their Take Action Club held a family competition in the name of giving and their second annual Change for Change drive. They asked students to bring in loose change and deposit them in the buckets in the front lobby based on what grade level they are part of. The funds are being donated to support their neighbors in need. Latimer also held a school-wide Spirit Day on Friday, March 8th, 2019. The theme was Dress Like a Teacher and then Teacher Dress Like a Kid. For a $1 donation, they were asking students to intimidate their style, and the staff will in turn intimidate, imitate, can't speak today. Oh, my gosh, there's-
You're doing good, you're doing good.
Thank you. It was a fun day for students and staff. The Latimer community also hosted their annual Bingo Night on Friday, March 1st, in the gymnasium. It was a great night for all in attendance, and bingo's super fun. On March 12th through the 14th, Latimer is hosting their Scholastic Book Fair. On the 13th, they are having a Peach Wave School fundraiser. And then their biggest fundraiser, the Spring All for Kids, will be taking place on March 29th to the 30th. The PTO needs all the families on board to help with the event. They're looking for consignors, volunteers, and donations. You can also help in a big way by spreading the word about the sale. The PTO earns 100% of the profits and, like, for all of those donated items. And then Drop Off for Donations, that are gently used seasonal kids stuff in the lobby, is on Thursday, March 21st to Wednesday, March 27th during school hours. And then on April 17th, Latimer has their academic fair. They also have a new spring spectacular date. It's been moved to May 10th, and it's going to be from 5:00 to 7:00, and that looks like it's for Latimer. Squad and Line, they are extending a big thank you to their community for the help in collecting 855 pairs of socks to donate to Gifts of Love as part of their Read Across America Day. Congratulations to the Squad and Line students, Emile and Nora Carroll, who raised over $900 from their fiddle performance. All proceeds are being donated to Fight Against Hunger. There's also our new art show featuring K through 12 art at the Board of Education for students and to voice their celebration of the National Youth Art Month. We had Raffaela, Rose Sadio, Kyle Norton, and Lincoln Turner for having their artwork selected to be in the show, and they wanted to extend their congratulations to the art teachers for guiding these wonderful students. The students at Squad and Line are also being challenged to read 100,000 minutes between March 21st and the 27th. Our goal is to have every member of the Squad and Line community read every day and exceed their teacher recommendations. A suggested pledge amount of five cents per minute to support Squad and Line Media Center, the renovation that they have going on down there. The top classroom, who has read the most amount of minutes above the teacher recommendation, will be invited to attend the Fleming Farm Hayride at Tomoto Farm for ice cream, and then Ms. Evans and Mr. Patralla are going to kiss a pig during the Shines celebration on April 5th. For Henry James, they conducted their annual Spread the Word and the Word events, including the signing of the pledge banner in the hallway and the distribution of Choose to Include bracelets to be more inclusive and be aware, but also to honor the differences between us. They also had their musical performance of James and the Giant Peach Junior on Thursday, March 14th, and Friday, March 15th at 7:00, and then Saturday, March 16th, in the SHS auditorium. It was an amazing show. I had some friends working it, and they said it was amazing. Henry James also recently held their Culture Night, which was February 27th. They had well over 100 people attend, and it was a wonderful evening to celebrate the diverse cultures that make up our community. If you missed it this year, definitely look out for next year, it was an amazing event. On March 2nd, a group of 11 players from Simsbury High School and HJMS competed in the Connecticut State Scholastic Chess Championship, which conducted, or consisted, rather, 160 players in total. With this, it's an individual competition, but a school team title is also awarded by totaling the scores of the best four players per school. At the end of the day, both Henry James and Simsbury High School were awarded with state championship trophies, so congratulations to the students and the coaches. And lastly, for Simsbury High School, the annual Avon Simsbury High School College Fair is Monday, April 1st, from 6:30 to 8:00 at Avon High School. They're asking that people don't miss this opportunity. You can visit with over 100 different college representatives, and student and parents are invited to attend this valuable night full of information. On March 8th, Simsbury Performing Arts also had their annual Gala for Evening with Friends. The SHS music students were treated to a master class where the teachers performed their pieces and received feedback from our jazz teacher, Ken Fisher. The performance allowed students to see their teachers engage with each other and witness careful refinement of their work. The music was beautiful, and the performance was very special for all those in attendance. On March 12th, the SHS National Honor Society held their annual Blood Drive in the Blue Gym. We wanted to extend a thank you to all those attended to donate blood, and also those who gave their time and running it. A lot of the students who are part of NHS were very vital in having a very successful day. On Thursday, March 14th, SHS students, teachers, and others who love mathematics engaged in activities to celebrate to all things pi, or 3.1415, et cetera. SHS students and staff members enjoyed a number of events that paid homage to the mighty 3.14. A scavenger hunt, student recitations of the digits of pi, and teachers wearing a variety of math t-shirts and other events. It's so funny when the announcements come on until you go find a teacher wearing your shirt, and you just see kids, like, running down the hallway top speed to go win a pie. It's very enjoyable to watch. On Thursday, March 21st, sophomore and junior families participated in Campus Connection at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. There were five experienced college admissions officers providing an overview of the college search and the admissions process. On Thursday, March 28th, we all welcomed Simsbury High School for their Spring Band Concert at 7:00 in the auditorium. We actually just had an announcement. It's definitely an event that everyone should go to. And every year, the governor appoints two members to the Board of Education, so if there's juniors who want to take my spot next year, definitely sign up. It's a very fun job, and I've loved every moment of it so far, and I'm looking forward to finishing out the year strong. Tuesday, March 19th, was Simsbury High School's Wear White for Women Day in honor of National Women's History Month. Students honor the past, present, and future contributions of women to our society by wearing white to school. And this is something we're very proud of. Two Simsbury High School students and their teachers have been selected to travel to France for three weeks in July to participate in a unique community service project called Digging into History: World War II Trench Restoration. And I'm going to butcher it, in Sephracy, France?
It's a tough one.
I think, I don't know.
I wasn't even going to attack.
I was like, maybe it's in France.
You did a good job.
Thank you. The French teacher, Madame Cristalini, will serve as the French-speaking liaison for a group of 15 French students from Connecticut, including two of our SHS students, Katie Hitzin and Josh Pico. They will be tasked with clearing vegetation from redigging sections of and restoring the trenches that Connecticut soldiers used and the 102nd Infantry Regiment occupied during World War I. It was in the village of the same thing I can't pronounce, on April 20th, 1918, that the first German offensive against the American troops took place. The battle raged throughout the day and heavy losses on both sides. Ultimately, the village was destroyed, but citizens from Connecticut then collected $5,000 to help rebuild the water supply and installed a water fountain with a plaque in the town square. And a bond was forged between Connecticut and this town in France. Last year, on the 100th anniversary of this battle, the bond was reaffirmed, so now we are sending these students and Madame Cristalini to go kind of be our ambassadors for this, so we're super proud of these two students. Wednesday, March 27th, is Connecticut SAT School Day. The juniors are, some of them are excited, some of them are a little nervous. We're going to see how it turns out, but they're very excited for the SAT School Day tomorrow. Also tomorrow, at 7:00 p.m., SHS is going to be having their special band concert, The Planets by Gustav Holst. It's a challenging program that the band has worked very hard to prepare for. And then lastly, on Thursday, March 28th, at 7:00 p.m., the Friends for Music and Performing Arts will present a townwide festival featuring fiddler Jean Freeman, and the performance will take place in Simsbury High School Auditorium, and admission is completely free.
Excellent.
Lots to go through, sorry about that.
Lots of things to do.
Thank you.
Excellent. Mr. Frank, anyone have any questions?
As a postscript.
Yes, Todd, you're up next, so please tell us.
There's something very amazing that happened in the month of March in the press. One of them is, in the Valley Press, there's a front-page article, "A Passion for Engineering." This group of Simsbury High School engineering students went over to Henry James Memorial School to talk to those kids over there about engineering, and it made the front page of Valley News. And these are all young women.
Excellent.
You know, that gender that can't do science?
I've heard the rumors, but it's not true.
And then, shortly thereafter, like, just a couple weeks later, here's this public release from the school system, "Simsbury Students Excel at Home Show Competition." Again, a group of young women from our school winning all kinds of prizes at the home show competition having to do with architecture and technology.
They designed houses.
Yeah, and I just think it's wonderful to see this trend within our school system, and it should keep up. And I just want to do one shout-out to an ABC boy. His name is Gio Kissé. Gio won first place in the Regional Future Business Leaders of America Public Speaking Competition.
Wonderful, it's amazing.
Yeah, and Gio, he was in the category of introduction to public speaking, and he got first prize, and now he has an opportunity to compete at the national level in San Antonio.
Oh, that's awesome.
We're really proud of Gio.
That's very exciting. Jennifer?
I have nothing today.
Brian? Lydia?
Yeah, last week, we, as you know, it's buzzing around the legislature in Hartford and DC, but last week was the annual Day on the Hill, and unfortunately, I couldn't make it due to a family emergency, but it was very well-attended. Several hundred people were there. Unfortunately, the governor was invited, could not come and speak, but Diana Wenzel, Commissioner of Education, came to speak to the crowd. This was a great opportunity because the, all four education committee leaders were able to attend, and also, as you know, there are 18 members on the education committee, many of them are new, so they had the opportunity to come and meet with board members and superintendents and district leaders. The real takeaway from the entire day, along with everything else that's going on in the Capitol between tolls and marijuana, but the real takeaway coming from the Day on the Hill was that the governor's revised legislative proposal, as you know, started out through one of the lawmakers, but it's on the shared services, and this is something that Matt, you know, and others know, how much districts and superintendents and boards have been, you know, talking to legislators about the original form of the plan. So, it's really now in a better position, better progress, because it's the shared services are where districts, you know, around the state are looking at, as you know, and Crex, we have a lot of that too, than the original plan of regionalization. So, more to come on that. It still has a long way to go, along through the committees, along with different amendments in the bill, so it's a work in progress as we move forward with that. So, that was what was going on, and of course, as you know, the state agenda is out, that we have put through caves, so we are working with the legislators and, you know, in terms of our legislative priorities that we want to put forward as a state. Tomorrow, I will be leaving for several days for National School Board Association. We have our annual conference for public education leaders in, where am I going? In Philadelphia. So, I will be attending, as you know, I'm a board of director representing the Northeast region, so we have that. We also have the huge delegate assembly where what we do on the state level with our delegate assembly and our legislative agendas, we will be doing on a national level. So, that will be another entire day with other colleagues that are there. We also have, you know, guest speakers, and I'll be presenting two workshops with other colleagues from around the country. So, we have about 6,000 attendees coming and some very nationally-known, you know, speakers and keynote speakers and highlights, so it will be very, very busy, and, you know, we also have at that federal level, at that national level, the agenda for public education that we will also be putting forth and taking back to our local districts next week. So, that's what's going on on both fronts with me.
Thank you. Todd?
I'm sitting here with the two little girls from The Shining staring at me.
It is quite a picture. I noticed it myself. Look at the jewelry and that beautiful girl in the bottle. Look lower.
It's great artwork, as usual. I'm all set.
Well, but we've, we've got multimedia art, we've got, we've got pastels, we've got drawings, we've got, we've got jewelry. There's a, there's a variety of art here that anyone is welcome to come look at, for sure. Moving on. Sue?
I have nothing today.
Todd, I mean Jeff. I can't get it out of my head.
No, I just wanted to briefly commend the Henry James PTO for last week. They did a, they had a meeting on, held by really Officer Cushman on vaping and social media, and it was really great and incredibly eye-opening in all sorts of ways for some of us parents. You know, you never realize how many apps and programs are out there that you don't know until they're all flashed up on the screen in front of you. But anyway, so, just a great job, and hope they make that a regular, regular event.
Mrs. Limkey?
So, a couple of things. The Community for Care recently had, earlier this month, a program on eating disorders, where a teenage author and survivor of an eating disorder came and spoke about her personal experience and about her book that she self-published. We also had people from Public Health Department and a nutrition specialist come and speak in a panel, so if you missed it, you can catch that on SCTV. It was posted on March 20th. And the Community for Care, you'll hear in a little bit, when Matt and I provide an update on equity work, their role in some of the actions that we'll be taking as a community. On March 6th, the Simsbury High School Unified Basketball Team became the CCC Conference Champions, which is pretty cool. And they were invited to play halftime at the State Boys and Girls Tournament the following weekend, so that was really cool. Staff and students on March 21st participated in World Down Syndrome Day by raising awareness by wearing creative and unique socks, so we've got a lot of pictures of people in their fun socks. And then finally, upcoming, on April 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, is going to be Special Ed Day on Capitol Hill. So, you may recall last year that the Simsbury School District sponsored that day. We've passed that torch to Bristol, but one of our parents, Charlene Ridgway, was asked to speak about her experience and the experience of her children, so certainly I invite all board members to attend. It's always a very empowering and informative day.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Just a couple of committee updates. Thank you to the members of the Policy Committee who came, caused us to be a few minutes late for this meeting, but we had a number of policies to look at and a review of the Board of Education bylaws, and we'll be bringing that to the full board at your April meeting for a first reading of policies. Personnel and negotiations is, we are, Burke and I are preparing for negotiations with our custodial group that begins soon, so Personnel and Negotiations is convening Tuesday morning with Mr. Leclerc and I to set goals for that. Catching up with some of the things that Ms. Murray has been good about over the years, making sure you have, wanted to draw your attention to the Simsbury High School Program of Studies. It probably should have gotten into your hands earlier, but we're just catching up, but it's always a great annual look at the robust set of courses that our students have available to them at Simsbury High School, not only with the rich academics, but the many elective areas and the amazing depth that you can pursue in that. So, invite the board members to look at that pretty impressive document. If you have any questions at all, please direct them to me. And I just wanted to highlight that in Human Resources, we are heading into recruiting season. We have a number of teacher hires to do. This is the time that you head out to a number of different places, including the colleges with their new graduates who are ready, and I'll be heading with a team to three different fairs, starting with Crex Minority Recruiting Fair on Thursday, and then next week, both at Central Connecticut and Yukon's Recruiting Fairs, so we'll be busy in Human Resources out looking for that next generation of teachers here in Simsbury.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leclerc.
Just one item to keep the board up to, up to speed. The Henry James renovation project, the construction management firm, Downs Construction, has bid, has a bid opening this Friday that will be taking place in this building, but they'll be opening bids for that project and then forwarding that to the Public Building Committee on Monday, so we'll keep you, keep in the loop on how those go.
Thank you. Mr. Curtis? I have a couple things. One, the town has created a sustainability committee, and Jeff Tyndall has offered to sit on it, which is very nice, and be our liaison to it. So, that committee hasn't started yet, but it will be starting very soon, and it is, again, more of the shared services and the, and the physical plants and the environment, so it'll be interesting to see what they come out with, but it's a cool idea, and hopefully it will be very interesting, and you'll tell it, Mr. Tyndall will tell us everything that's going on. So, thank you very much for stepping up to that. And to add on to what Ms. Lydia said, we have, the governor has changed. We had a regionalization bills that have been running rampant through the committee, the education committee at the state level, and we have made a statement that we are not in favor of regionalization and that, you know, there are a lot of things that we are looking forward to working with. We're happy to work with other schools, and when the governor changed his perspective on that, he said, "Well, let's talk about, more about shared services and working with others to have a buying power and an opportunity to try to save money in that vein," and we are, you know, happy to talk about that, as long as they don't tell us that we have to merge with other schools and make mandates that we can't afford and that won't necessarily save us money. So, we will get more, more on that as it comes available, and we will be sending out the statement to all of our families this week. That said, anyone else have anything? All right, moving on, we have the minutes of February 26th, special meeting.
Move to approve.
Okay, thank you. Susan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I will abstain.
You'll abstain, that passes. We have the special meeting of February 26th.
Regular meeting.
Regular meeting. It says special. It says special on it.
Move to adopt.
Okay.
Just to say, Katie did an amazing job capturing everything. There was a lot of stuff.
Really great job getting everything down, because it really, it reads the way people say it.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have, we have, for our audience, if you'd like a copy, it's, thank you very much. The Lee family is very helpful. So, I would, if everyone has read it, I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I will abstain.
Thank you very much. That passes. We're moving on to March 11th meeting.
Move to approve.
Thank you very much, Todd. Second?
I will second.
Thank you, Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Jen, you weren't here.
I abstain, and I'm not allowed to second?
No. She's allowed to second, okay.
I'm allowed to second.
Very much learned every day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent. And now we move on to our personnel.
Two retirements for the board tonight. Two teachers with more than 40 combined years of experience in the Simsbury Public Schools. We start with Diane Benson, special education teacher at Tooten Hills, who has been with us for 16 years, who will be retiring at the end of this school year. That'll be one of the teachers we're out recruiting to replace in the next few weeks as she ends her tenure at Tooten. And then I'll just say, one of my personal favorites, our Latin teacher at Simsbury High School for many years, Judy Trout. I say Simsbury High School, but I should note that many, Judy split between Henry James and Simsbury High School for many years, so a lot of, she started with a lot of her students in 7th grade, and she would have them all the way through 12th grade in Latin, and she, she really had a tremendous impact on a lot, students in that program who really have a passion for, for that.
She had an impact on those who didn't even have a passion.
Yeah. So, congratulations to Judy, who is, I'm going to get to spend some more time with her family after 25 years in the Simsbury Public Schools. So, if someone could make that motion?
Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Diane Benson and Judy Trout effective June 30th, 2019.
Second. Thank you, Sue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are very fortunate to have these people in our system and making such a difference in every single day. This is where our greatest value is, is these people who come and stay and care, and my daughter loved her, and maybe she can do some birdwatching, Mrs. Trout, who's a favorite hobby. So, that is very sad that they're leaving, but they, thank them so much for all their hard work. Moving on to non-renewal of non-tenured teachers.
This is also me. This is an annual action that needs to happen if there are teachers in the school system if there are teachers in the school system who are non-tenured teachers whose contracts are not being renewed for next year. In this case, this year, all of... There are six teachers on our list this year. All of these are teachers who were hired with the intention to fill in for a child rearing leave for somebody else. So they were hired under the condition that this very well could be only one year and no opportunity here next year. They accepted the job under those circumstances. And now that has proven to be true. I met with each of these people to explain that to them, but it does require board action for us. We never liked this situation, but it is one where this is not a... We are not laying off anybody who had long-term commitment here in the Simsbury Public Schools. So that's another one that does have to be read into the motion.
I'll move that the contract of the employment of the following staff members listed below here be non-renewed effective June 30th, 2019 in that the superintendent of schools is directed to advise such persons in writing of this action. Do you need to read the names?
Yeah, you probably should read the... Just the names, you don't...
Julian Broker, Bethany Franklin, Ryan Gritter, Kevin Hune, Kelly Myers, and Gabe Remmeler.
I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank them very much for coming in. We're sorry we can't keep them.
I do contact all the other personnel directors in the area if there are openings. And then I do try to help these people network as they look for new jobs.
And thank you very much for making sure you take the time to tell them in person. I think that makes a big difference.
Yeah.
I think that's a statement to you, and that's nice that you do that. Okay, so who's up for the Eric Dolan scholarship?
I'm going to do the scholarships in Ms. Murray's place tonight. So three scholarships for the board's action tonight. The first one is Eric Dolan, who passed away a few months ago. It's a very sudden death of a member of our community who had been a member of the Hartford Symphony Orchestra, had been really active with our music program in the schools. And this is a gift from the Simsbury Friends for Music and Performing Arts to establish a scholarship in his memory to be awarded each year to a handful of graduating seniors. The members... The Friends for Music and Performing Arts already offer a number of awards. This would be added to that and specifically targeting orchestra students with a priority given to cello students, which was Eric's instrument.
All right.
What does it mean depending on funds raised? They have fundraisers to...
They still have money coming in because the death was just a few months ago. So there's still money being raised into this scholarship fund.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Is this going to be a one-year scholarship or...?
No, they're planning to do it for more than one year.
So they're just trying to figure out how much they can actually spend out? Excellent.
I'll move that the Board of Education approve the Eric Dolan Memorial Scholarship to be dispersed beginning in 2019.
Second.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to comment on that.
Sure.
That I am very, very pleased to hear about this. Eric Dolan was my first cello teacher. And I know him, knew him from that and followed his professional career. His death was a real tragedy and a real loss to the cultural aspect of our community. And I'm just so happy to hear about this program. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank them very, very much. Neil?
And the next one is from Phase Zero Design, which has a local office here in Simsbury. It's a design firm offering architectural planning interior design services. This would be targeted, a scholarship, $1,000 awarded to a graduating senior in this year's class, specifically a senior looking in a design-related field. Probably some of those students that Mr. Frank highlighted before, who were award winners at the Home Builders Association contest. Those would be exactly the kind of students in the architecture program who would be targeted for this scholarship. And thank you to Phase Zero Design.
Move that the board approve the Phase Zero Design Scholarship to be dispersed in 2019.
I'll second.
Thank you. Anyone have anything... Any comments, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent.
And the last one tonight for scholarships is the Roger Preston Memorial Scholarship. It's being brought by the Hartford Audubon Society in honor of Roger Preston, who is a Simsbury resident and a longtime and valuable member of their society. $2,000 to be awarded to a graduating senior this year and to be presented by, I believe, his widow. So thank you to the Audubon Society for this generous gift.
It's wonderful. Any motions?
Move that the Board of Education approve the Roger Preston Memorial Scholarship to be dispersed in 2019.
Second.
I will say, Dr. Preston was a dentist in town forever and ever and ever. And he raised three children who all went through Simsbury Schools. And his daughter and I were best friends when we went to school here at Belden. And so he is a huge community member and has, I think, been in every organization in town and given so much to this town. It's just such a joy to be able to remember him this way because it was his favorite thing to birdwatch. And the eagles are back, and it was always a search. So I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Leclerc?
I'm doing the next one then. Just a PTO gift that we had asked the board's action on this evening, and it would be for $1,831 worth of classroom book titles for Central School.
Move the proposed gift of book donations from the Central School PTO be approved.
Second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We wouldn't be anywhere without our supporters. PTOs are the best.
And the memorial scholarships. Thank you to everybody. This is a good meeting to have.
Yeah, it's nice. Now I'm moving on to approval of retirement plan subcommittee.
Do a little background?
That would be great.
Okay. So the subcommittee was formed a number of years ago with representation from Board of Finance, Board of Selectment, and the Board of Education. Mike Goman had been one of our board reps for many years. And now Jen is the veteran from our board. And I also attend on a staff basis. So the focus has been on the investment earnings. We work with the financial investment firm that helps to guide our process. And that's for both our town pensions, which includes Board of Education non-certified staff. And there's also a defined contribution plan. So those are the two major focal points. There's also the OPEB trust, which has been growing quite a bit. And so this memorandum of understanding is really a formalization of what the duties of the subcommittee would be as detailed in the charter and what is the Board of Finance role. So this is a formalization of that. And the Board of Finance, at one of their prior meetings, reviewed a draft of it, asked the town lawyer to look at it, and ultimately wanted to get each of the other boards to see it, have a chance to comment, but to try to get this finalized. So I'm hopefully able to answer questions that you might have on it. And perhaps Jen also, so...
Any comments, questions, thoughts?
This doesn't change anything, it just...
The main... Yeah, it doesn't... I don't think it's going to so much functionally change how this group works. There will be more of a formal reporting back from the Board of Finance members of the subcommittee to the full Board of Finance. And probably maybe one or two extra reports from the consultants that we work with. But it really is clear in the charter that they have to... The Board of Finance has to do sort of the final action on some of these items. But there's a lot of detail that this group works with and makes recommendations on. A host of items is outlined on the second page, the duties listed there. And I still think it's an important use of our time.
Are all three boards voting separately on this?
Yes, because ultimately, if you vote on this, then that would, you know, that would give Tara the go-ahead to then...
I probably worded that poorly. So if we vote on it and the Board of Selectment says, say they make changes to it, there's something...
They would circle those back, yeah. So if you have a question or a comment as a board, this is certainly an opportunity for us to send that back.
Just one question about these community members at large. Is there any sense behind this particular memorandum of understanding as to the criteria for selecting those community members?
You know, I think there was some conversation. I'm looking at Chris, who's also been serving on the Board of Selectment. We don't have any current vacancies, I don't believe. And these same two members were actually serving when I got here 10 years prior. And I used to start with the group that preceded this group, the insurance and pension group. But I believe there was some conversation amongst the Board of Finance, maybe, or amongst our group of what that criteria should be. And I think they have not formalized it, but it would be... They would be looking for people with relevant experience.
But those positions are currently occupied?
They are.
Thank you.
And you're in favor of this as well for the Board of Selectment? Have they met about it?
The board approved it last night without edits.
Okay.
And I'm chairman of the subcommittee. And I approve of, basically as Burke is saying, it just clarified what the protocols are going to be for decision-making and recommendations. So, absolutely. Are you chairman of this committee? I am. I am now. Oh, good. For just a very short time. You guys could make the vote. About a month and a half.
Because I was going to ask if they picked the chairman. It's got to be someone from the Board of Finance.
Yeah, I'm chairing. Kevin Porello is vice chair.
Thank you all. Anyone have any more questions, thoughts? Let's proceed. Anyone... I'd be open to a motion. All those in favor? A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Thank you very much. Moving on. So we are in spring break during April... During our next meeting of April 9th. So I would like us to cancel that meeting if there are no thoughts or concerns. And I would accept a motion to do so.
Are there going to be enough meetings?
Yes. We will have our...
With budgets discussion?
Our budget discussions. We're having a budget discussion tonight. The public hearing will be Tuesday, April 2nd at 6:00 PM, which is next week. So then that would just give us a week without a meeting. So then our next meeting will be April 23rd. And when's the town referendum? May?
Tentatively, I think it's the second... The 14th, second Tuesday.
Of May.
But it has not been... It has not been finalized.
There is time. Okay.
So they have to refer it to referendum at the end of the public hearing. But the PS on that is they could actually send it back to us at the end of the public hearing.
Yes, they don't have to send it to referendum. They have to send it to referendum at what date?
So April 23rd is... Was the continuation date for the public hearing if they need to do that.
So we have a week in there after spring break we needed to have a meeting?
Yes.
Special meeting, right.
Right.
Likewise, we're about to embark on a big conversation about where we are with equity work. Canceling that meeting wouldn't affect anything coming out of that work? No.
It shouldn't.
We wouldn't need that, I guess, meeting as well. I guess... I think I said that backwards. We wouldn't need that meeting for anything involved there.
It shouldn't because the next time we're... I mean, I think by April, we'll have more things in place and more follow-up to come back with more information.
No, I'm good.
Anyone else have any questions? I'd accept a motion.
Move to cancel the Board of Education meeting scheduled on April 9th, 2019.
Second?
I'll second.
Any other conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now moving on to our public school budget.
A little budget conversation tonight. So our end goal tonight will be to approve a new budget number. We have some new information to share that we had previously. And then a conversation about some suggestions and recommendations we have and certainly opportunity to get your feedback. But I thought I would go through a couple of slides just to frame out kind of where we've been and where we're going. And we can use that to tee up the conversation, any questions that people have. So end of February, at our meeting, the Board of Ed approved a 2.5% increase to the operating budget over last year's spending. Between that date and the time where we went to present to the Board of Selectment, we had some new information come up. We had two new certified staff retirements. So that's an additional $50,000 in savings and operating costs. And when we looked at our projections coming in that Neil tracks on a regular basis, the kindergarten numbers at one of the elementary schools came in much lower than we had thought. We're going to be able to do with one less kindergarten section at one of the elementary schools that still stay within our guidelines, so...
Who was that?
Believe that was Tooten Hills. Yep, yep. So those two items actually pulled our budget down to a 2.3% increase. All right? And then we certainly went, we presented to the Board of Finance. They referred the 2.5% because that's what we had approved to the public hearing April 2nd because we hadn't approved a new number even though we had some new information. So a couple of things we need to think about tonight are the fact that Lockton, a new insurance consultant, was brought on board. Burke worked with Amy downstairs, worked with the Board of Finance on different insurance options after really looking at that Internal Service Fund and some of the premium rates that we had had in our insurance and recommended an increase of $273,000 to what we already had in our operating budget, which is a 12% premium increase. We had a 9% premium increase. The town was asked to do the same thing in their operating budget. All right, so it was a consistent move across both boards. So that obviously has an impact to the overall operating cost. There was conversation about... I have my wrong sheet of notes here, but... Conversation about utilizing the non-lapsing fund to offset that increase, to kind of neutralize that increase, bring the operating cost down. So we need to have a conversation about that today. And then we need to have a conversation at the request of the Board of Finance of can we realize any further movement towards that 2% guideline that they initially gave us back in November when we kicked off the budget process? So I think there's one more. One more slide? No. Okay. So again, the recommendation from our administration with the understanding of the Board of Finance would be to use $300,000 of the $386,000 or 383 right there that we have in the non-lapsing fund to offset the insurance increase. That would bring our overall increase back down to a 2.26%. We've had conversations administratively on items outside of personnel that we could potentially realize another level of savings on. We don't have significant dollars there, but equipment is an area that's a zero-based budget item every year. We can look at that, reprioritize some of those purchases across the buildings and realize a reduction in spending of $30,000. We also looked at memberships. The school system signs up for various professional memberships on an annual basis. And we think we can find savings of almost $12,000 in memberships. We would recommend two for consideration. One is the organization that historically has provided our enrollment projections on an annual basis. Malone and McBroom being brought on board as part of our new facilities study. We have some great data to work with over the course of the next couple of years. So we think we can utilize some savings there. We had put $5,000 of an additional membership contribution to SETV. At this point, I know the request went to the Board of Selectment as well. They do not have that request supported in their budget at this point. And I would recommend that if we are looking for some savings, that we would move that new request back out. At this point, that would move our overall increase to 2.2%. So we're certainly within the ballpark of conversation to the 2% guideline. The two items I would put on the table for discussion this evening are the IT technician additional position that we had recommended for Henry James School. The total dollar value of that position with benefits is a little bit over $80,000. So that's something that would certainly make an impact to the operating cost. I've had conversations... We've had them administratively. I had a conversation with Scott Baker today, pretty detailed conversation on that. This resource was going to be put in place to help ensure a smooth transition to the one-to-one Chromebook take-home initiative. In our conversations, not the best scenario, obviously, but Scott would understand and even offer that with the renovation in process next year and the significant disruption of people moving from place to place, that to launch a new initiative, he could understand if we wanted to wait on that. Again, not an ideal position, but something certainly he had understanding of in our conversation. They have access. We have one-to-one access. It would simply be... They really felt they would require this resource as you take these devices home, more break. There's more tech support they felt they needed in the building to really initiate this procedure. So that's one area we can talk about and think about. The other position that we've talked about administratively up here would be the school safety, director of school safety position. And what we had talked about is not the elimination of that position, but the potential mid-year hire of that position. And if you actually went to your folders, everybody kind of has this spreadsheet. And this is kind of the march down of the different pieces of the puzzle that I've been told... that I've been talking about. And you can see, um, number seven on that list is half of that position, hiring it mid-year. Give us an opportunity to think about the implementation a little bit. We have some future retirements, we know in the areas of facilities that, that will become an opportunity to kind of look at things in totality. That could be something we consider. I don't feel comfortable taking that entire position off the table without significant conversation as we presented it early on. Um, that's an area that's grown in importance, grown in complexity. Um, a lot of that work, if not all of it, sits with, with Neil and Burke right now. So it would really allow us to, I think, have a professional eye to moving forward and improving there. But a mid-year hire would basically get us to that 2% increase, as you can see. So, not significant movement from 2-2 to 2, but some areas for us to talk about and consider, I guess. And our job would be tonight to approve a number. Burke has the flexibility to look at different things, I think, in his spreadsheet. Um, and in the end, make a motion that we're willing to move forward back to the Board of Finance for the, for the town meeting or the public hearing.
Time for comment?
Time for comment.
Yes, time for comment.
Not only do, would I join the superintendent in reluctance to take that school safety director off, I'm equally reluctant to even delay it. And it's, we had some pretty good discussion about that.
Yep.
It was, it was absolutely, we just felt, I think, as a board and as a, as a system administration, that, that we, we can't do, we can't delay this anymore. This is so important. See, we can't delay safety, and the world's getting more and more and more dangerous in schools, and I would in no way support the reduction. And in part, mainly because I don't think we should delay it as a matter of principle, but also because, broken record, I'm sorry, but that 2% number is an arbitrary number, and, and there's no logic to it whatsoever. And for us to make a, an important personnel change of, of that importance, to just hit an arbitrary number, to me doesn't make any sense, and I would not support it.
Jen?
So, I'm going to just go on the IT part. That concerns me only because I think that Henry James, given their schedule, I think, given the annoyance and stuff that's going to happen to the kids when they have all that construction going on, I think that one-on-one is even more critical because of that. And I wonder how they would address, like, there's not, there's study halls that are done right now in rooms that do not have access to computers. Additionally, at Henry James, unless the policy has changed within the last week, they do, they have to go to the library, they have to go to, they used to be able to borrow and from a classroom and go to their study hall, and they are no longer allowed to do that. And so, just getting work done, having them do that, I think having access to one-on-one would be beneficial for those kids educationally.
Good point. Anyone else?
Yeah, just to, go ahead. As I say, just on the non-lapsing, it's obviously, you're decreasing that account by, what, 2/3 roughly? More so, just from, is there any concern about taking it down that low? Like, in my world, is there a solvency issue? You know, that, that's the way I think about it. Is there, are we comfortable there?
The $300,000 was, was sort of the recommended amount out of the $385,000 because of the fact that for, for this year-end, we still would like to have that comfort level of where are we going to end up this year?
You know, I get that. I guess, let me ask it a different way. Are we comfortable having $80,000 left?
I think it's, I think it's an okay number.
I think the other, I think the other realization, I just want to be clear with that account. The other realization of those dollars, if they're not utilized for this offset, they're going to be requested, and we're going to have conversation about utilizing them to supple, supplement the Internal Service Fund. So it's, I don't believe the conversation is going to be a matter of this year of an opportunity to hold on to, to more of those dollars.
Well, just a comment to, on, on Jeff's, Jeff's question. So, we take $300,000 non-lapsing to accomplish this objective, and that leaves 83. Now, in the larger scheme of things, $83,000 in a non-lapsing fund is not consequential. It's, it's just basically, it's such a small amount of money, it's not consequential. So, one way to deal with this Director of School Safety situation, and even the IT situation, as Jennifer has pointed out, would be say, okay, let's go all the way. What's the difference between $83,000 and zero, basically nothing, in a system of this size?
It's a, it's a significant difference in the end of this year, if we're trying to balance our, our budget. It's a difference between having to ask them for a reserve fund transfer and asking them to utilize a fund that we have partial control over. That's the, that's the practical difference for us.
So it's not a savings account then?
It's not.
It's not a savings, and the, it, the, the balance per the policy does not, does not automatically go forward beyond one year. So it's not, it's not meant to just, to just build, build interest, so to speak.
No.
And this was the only way to get down to that 2% is just these two?
Well, this is, this is what I would say, you know, you, you both present excellent cases. Those are the ones we presented to you in the budget presentations, right? So I don't pretend to think that these are overly positive ways. But when you need to make budget reductions, the thing you look at is new requests beyond what you currently have. I don't feel comfortable at this point, after our conversations and analysis, to cut current services in an effort to bring those positions on board. I would rather have the conversation, quite honestly, of coming in a little bit higher than two than having to go back and cut current services. So that's, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but the assumption there is that we need to make budget reductions.
Well, they, they requested that we took a look at it, so we're taking a look at it. You have the-
But I don't look at it as a need to do. I think it's the wrong thing to do.
Yeah.
Sure is, were you gonna, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, nope, go ahead.
You're on the sheet?
Two questions.
Yeah.
The, the, the reduction amounts for, for six and seven, those are kind of salary-plus numbers, so the benefits and things like that.
It's, right, seven is a half-year, but, so it's, that times two.
Yeah, I was looking at the computer technician.
Yeah.
But how did, um, I was, I was trying to find, like, what were the other options?
Other news. So, kind of when we went back and prioritized and talked to principals and gun about this, it was the social, social worker position.
Right.
And the 1.0 FTE to supplement world language at the elementary level, which was kind of that study we agreed to do the year before. So we felt from a prioritization standpoint, from the feedback from our building administrators, those were the top two priorities.
Right, and then the math dimension?
Some, some hours to supplement current, current staff as part of our math focus area that we really felt were important to continue on that path.
And the person that-
No good.
Yeah, no other options, no better.
Right.
And the person that's at the high school now, that IT person can't take on the capacity of Henry James or they're already full-time at Simsbury High School.
Right.
So I guess part of my question around that was, is there any way, and, and this just might be, we talked a lot about internships at the high school. Is there any way for some of our senior AP computer kids to maybe help out in that capacity at Henry James? Is that something we can look at, to kind of just go a little outside the box and maybe bring some of those kids forward?
I think, I think we could have conversations, but I mean, the clear message from the IT staff, from John Sia, from Scott, is it's not an initiative we can carry out and won't commit to carrying out without the extra resource. So I don't want to pretend that, hey, we'll give it a-
So there isn't a way to fix it?
We'll, we'll give it a try without the resource. I think that'd be set, setting them up for failure, quite honestly. You know?
Okay.
Wouldn't want to, I'm a flexible thinker, but I wouldn't want to go down that road.
This makes it especially hard for me because one thing, and it doesn't fit in the conversation here as much as it fits in the next conversation we're going to have, is one of the things that I wanted us to think about was to add another person to kind of address diversity.
Yeah.
To have somebody who can focus and coordinate our, our efforts based on, you know, the conversations we've been having. So, you know, I hate to see the reductions when, what I want to do is, I want to keep everything and, and add even more.
Right.
And I think we've, we've talked about that a little bit. We've had some conversations administratively here. I've had several conversations with Tom Moore, the superintendent of the West Hartford Public School System. I mean, a larger school system from ours, but they have a position. It's a Coordinator of Diversity and Community Outreach. Uh, so I'm coming to understand a little bit more how those roles and responsibilities are defined. I think one thing I'd like to do, based on, I know your interest, Todd, and other board members have voiced an interest in this, and we have as well, is to kind of step away from this budget conversation here and create a formalized job description.
Right.
Come back to you, um, later on in the spring with some real concrete thoughts on, on what we could do and maybe some potential ideas of how to fund that.
Yeah.
Uh, but it's, it's a hard one to kind of wrap into what we're talking about right now.
I agree. I mean, I want to make sure we do it right, and we don't just say, maybe it's worth this much and, and this. But I think that, um, you know, listening to what, what we were told, I want to make sure that we have somebody watching and that can, can focus full-time on that.
Yeah, I think, you know, with the professional development aspect, the carrying out of the strategic plan, all those things, outreach would be really important.
Just be clear, just for understanding, Matt, are you saying that right now we, we really haven't done the work to establish that position and try to get it within this budget proposal? But you feel we might be able to reallocate some funds later in the year after the budget is approved to get going on that? Is that what?
Both, both those things. I mean, I, I feel honestly, we need a little more time to analyze it. We've been very in the moment and trying to move forward. As you'll see some, you know, kind of stepping stone and building block work at the district level that we haven't had the opportunity to really study what that would look like. And as we get towards the end of the year, you know this, things happen in a $70 million budget with retirements, with movement.
Got it, yeah.
Do we look at some resources within and rename and reallocate? Those are all things I think we could talk about, but honestly, need a little more time to do that.
To do it correctly.
I agree with that 100%.
I just had a question.
I think everyone feels like it's a good thing to do.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think everyone feels strongly that it's something to work towards the Director of Diversity.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. No question.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I was just going to ask in relation to what we were looking at here. You talk about the savings in memberships with NESDAQ.
Yep.
So, does that mean the Malone-McBroom numbers, we're going to reuse them for a couple of years? Or we now have them doing projections for us going forward?
We have pretty accurate data for the next couple of years. I mean, you're going to get an update at the next board meeting. I mean, it is significant analysis way above and beyond.
What we get from NESDAQ.
What we get, that we'd feel pretty comfortable with that in, in the short term.
Okay.
And it's, it was a $7,000 annual cost to get the role of what we've gotten, so I think that is worth a relook anyhow.
Okay, okay. So that, so maybe we forego somebody projecting for us in the next school year?
I mean, we already have all of that.
Right, because we'll, because we'll use the data we have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I have, I do have to make mention of the $5,000 for the Simsbury SCTV because we do give them $5,000, so this would be in addition. It seems like they have a, because so many people are going off cable and onto streaming that they don't, they're not getting that $1 check on, that people check the box to give a dollar from their, from their, from their cable bills. And I don't think people understand that that's a thing. So that's a revenue that you didn't even know you were donating because you did it once and you didn't understand, but they are feeling the pain of it not coming in anymore. So I think the community needs to know that SCTV needs support, and anybody at home can definitely throw money towards them as well because they do do a great service. And those of you who don't have to, can sit in your jammies and watch our shows and be in the, and be able to know what's going on. We love that SCTV is here every night to do our show, our, our TV. So we want to make sure that, and if we find money, we will definitely put that, reinstate that, I hope.
Correct.
But, um, at this point in time, I'd like to just tell the public that it's a really important thing that we have in town, and SCTV does a great job. And any way that we can support them, they are great recipients and great community members.
So, let me just kind of frame this as, as we move forward. So four and five on the list, although we're not acting, they're overly positive recommendations in terms of the equipment and the memberships. That does nudge the increase down to 2.2. Any more conversation or any thoughts on those two positions? Because I think in the end, what we're going to have to do is, is Burke can create the number. We are comfortable moving forward, and we can move that number forward for conversation at the town meeting. Um, it wasn't a hard fast, you have to come in it to, it was please take another look, utilize the non-lapsing, have the conversation, get the feedback, and then move the number forward back to us, so.
Yes. I just wanted to ask, currently at the high school regarding number seven, what do we have currently for personnel for school safety?
Okay, then, Neil?
So, we have three Simsbury Public Schools employees who are security guards at the school. One who's a retired state trooper. And then we have another contracted service employee through a local security company who's an hourly employee that helps operate the buzzer system in the front, front area of the school. So I, I would describe it as those four personnel who are our security force at the high school. But there's also a full-time school resource officer, which is Officer Cormier, who is stationed at Simsbury High School. And then at the other schools, Officer Cushman, primarily located at Henry James, but doing outreach to the elementary schools through some education programs. So I would describe that as our kind of budgeted security force in, in the Simsbury Public Schools, and that this is, um, this is a position that is pictured, modeled after some other districts that has, that has taken kind of the retired law enforcement person who's focused on a, a, a school safety from a very different lens than school people look at. Look at schools, well, we look at it more like they do now than maybe we did a decade ago. But that, it's, it's that kind of position. I will say also, I will note that I do think that based of Mr. Frank's comments about the board's commitment to safety and security, I will note the, your capital budget does include an additional $750,000 for school security infrastructure improvement. This was more on the personnel end of school safety, but you're making a significant additional capital investment to the infrastructure things that we're doing with some vestibule work to further harden our schools.
Similar to Henry James, similar to Squad, I was a double entry.
So, there is, there is a pretty significant-
This was somebody to kind of coordinate that work for you versus?
Coordinate that work and also, I think, be a liaison to our school safety. Each school has a school safety team that the principal and a small team is, and, and really to be a liaison to that team at each school and be there to work with them. And so they're, they're all trying to do different things to improve their internal safety procedures, and they need feedback and advice, and they need it from an expert.
Right.
Her question-
Jen, Jen, I'm sorry, Tom. Jen had a question that she's been trying for three people, and I've not addressed you, I'm sorry.
And you correct me if I'm wrong, Neil, but like, this role, I'm more, I personally would be more comfortable with doing a half-year or, or waiting on this role. If you, it's really taking the stuff that you are burdened with right now on top of your regular day-to-day, because I don't feel, I do feel security is really important, but I don't feel, I feel like our kids are safe. I feel like we, the safety officers and-
We've done a tremendous amount around school safety, so, and I'm proud of that work.
Yeah.
But I, I do, I, it was always a long-term proposal. It was about where I thought security needed to go in the future. So when we talked about cuts of what are the services that we're asking as new requests, there was kind of a, a notion of maybe we can wait on this one. It's important, but a, a delay of a few months for a few reasons. When you're talking about teacher recruiting, there's a time of year where you're recruiting teachers. A position like this, it's not a specific time of year that you need to go recruit this position. You could recruit it at any time of year, really. You're looking for a totally different pool of, of applicants who could come at, at really any time. And, you know, the, the other commitments that we've already made around the work that we're going to be doing around school safety this summer, even if we hired this person. In addition, I have some direct reports from myself that are going to be retiring right in this same timeframe. So Sue Kakamo, our enrollment coordinator and transportation coordinator, is retiring. It's some direct reports to me that are retiring at that exact time. So perhaps a delay in initiating a new employee would be beneficial in terms of, because this, the way this is structured is that this-
Yeah. So you feel strongly that this is a good idea to wait?
Right.
The way that this is structured is that this Director of School Safety would still report to me.
Right.
Because we still are doing all the capital improvement stuff, and so this is-
Yeah, but you need somebody to look at this globally. This isn't about- Yeah, but you need somebody to look at this globally. This isn't about just-
I agree, it has to come, but, right. But could it wait six months?
We've been talking about this for years.
This is drills, this is an analysis.
No, I think we agree, we need it, yeah.
To Neil's point, the analysis of the security staff we have in place.
Right.
Are there significant, you know, are there improvements we can make there?
Right.
It's not an easy one.
Tom?
Question for Mr. Sullivan or Neil. Has a job description been written for this position?
Yeah, I'm working off a job description. The Glastonbury Public Schools is the district that's had this position for the longest.
Yeah.
And several others have kind of followed suit recently. And so I'm working off of a job description that started in Glastonbury. South Windsor hired a position that fairly recently.
And which one?
And I just, I just saw this, a similar position advertised. I think they're in the hiring process right now for Berlin is hiring a similar-
The reason I ask about the job description is, I don't recall that it's ever came up. But what I'm wondering is whether or not in this job description, there will be anything related to drugs. Is this position purely for protecting our students and from violent events? Or is, is school safety going to be also the safety aspects of vaping, safety aspects of drugs and stuff?
I would say that type of education work has really fallen with our school resource officers.
Yeah.
That that has been, that's, that's really a lot of the mission of their work is kind of education and enforcement around things, drugs, but also the vaping products that have proliferated in the last few years. That's a ton of their work.
Yeah.
Maybe less so this person. But this person would be seen as in a strong collaboration with our school resource officers.
I only raise a point-
So as you remember, like, when I, we went to propose this, I went and met with the chief about this.
Yeah.
In terms of ensuring that we were on point. Do they see a value in this?
That case for it is so strong.
In terms of connectivity, so.
And I only raise a point about drugs, because there's increasing concern
Mm-hmm.
about drugs. And drugs is a safety issue.
Correct.
Yep.
Is this a full, is this enough for a full-time position? I just wondered, is this something that maybe could be discussed by this sustainability committee where, you know, is there like a Ramby or Avon or Farmington, somebody nearby where we could, you know?
Collaborative?
Yeah, have a director, you know, that way, I just, I'm having a hard time seeing this being, you know, a full-time job, but I'm clearly not thinking about all of the things. But it could also be nice to have ideas from other, you know, other layouts, other buildings with somebody.
Yeah, I think that's worth thinking about.
Talking more.
Talking more about certainly. You know, it's, it's, the group that I spent the most time talking with is the equivalent person in my position and their security director in Glastonbury, where I had several hours of conversation with them about the role that that person has done. We're seeing districts of our size creating this position.
The one thing I would say about that, when we had some early conversation about do we look at a third SRO at this point? Do we look at this position? One of the pieces about this position is they'd be in the schools. It's, again, boots on the ground all the time, looking through that lens.
What we've heard, I mean, at some point, we have to decide how to proceed.
Right.
And just what we've heard. We've heard a concern about not cutting that IT, that IT person. And we've heard concern about not delaying this, this, this position. But I don't know, how do we proceed under this?
So I think at this point, we talk about what we want to send back, the information back to Burke. Because he gave, these are the, these are obviously the important things that we can't line item because we're not in the schools. And these are what came to us from our administrators and our staff, who think that these are our best options to drop the, drop our numbers down a little bit more. We can drop everything and not six and seven and bring that to the-
That would be my recommendation.
And bring that to-
That's not what I'm hearing.
Would that be a motion?
We could, we could do, I mean, that could be the motion on that. And then that's what we bring to the public hearing, and we see what happens from there.
Which would be a 2.2.
I would so move that we accept items one through five for reductions, and we do not do six and seven.
Well, I think you just have to say, you accept the reductions of items one through five.
Yes, except the reductions.
Anyone have any thoughts or questions? You always look so thoughtful.
I have a question. I just want to make sure on number six, are we saying we need a computer technician at Henry James to roll out a one-to-one Chromebook initiative?
I think it won't happen.
Yes.
If we don't have somebody at Henry James, we can't roll out a one-to-one Chromebook initiative? Is that, I'm just, I'm new to this.
Yeah, so. That's what we've been told by our tech department and-
So we haven't talked about this since the workshop meeting, and it's, that's kind of the simplified answer. With the comment that Susan made earlier about could, could some of the student tech folks help? They actually are instrumental in making the one-to-one at the high school work. And it has been a stress on the library media center and the existing techs that we have, because we have five techs for seven buildings. So with, with the Henry James concept, you need somebody there before and after school, because there's constantly charging, loaning, bringing things in and, in and out. There's, there would be more computers to be repaired. So this person would not only be important to rolling out the one-to-one at Henry James, but they would also be repairing Chromebooks from the high school, which is double that load, because we're struggling to do that now. So it's kind of a combination of, of all those factors.
So this person would really be 712?
Yes, yes. They'd be based at Henry James, but they would be doing a large amount of work. And the feeling was, we don't have the same capability of a student tech group based at Henry James that we benefit from at thighs.
Okay.
These are, the amounts, the 84 and the 37, 500, I'm just, I'm surprised, they seem backwards.
So that, so one is?
So the, the salary on the Director of Safety is taking a guess that a person who, because you're probably recruiting a retired law enforcement, it may not be somebody who needs benefits. There may already be-
75,000 is not including the benefits, whereas 84 is for the, for the others.
Okay, okay.
Twenty-some on it.
Now I, now I get it.
Which, if you hire a per, like, there's, there's a suggestion that you have to offer benefits. But, you know, the, what, most of the people who are retired law enforcement are carrying a benefits package.
Totally understand that.
Anyone have any, do we get a motion? Oh, yeah. Tom made a motion. No, we're not talking about it. So I think you made a motion.
So we're not taking a motion?
We don't have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we've got a second. Now we're discussing.
This is the whole school.
So one, Burke, do we need to put the full
Value?
value of the security position in there?
It's already in our budget, so by not voting on this, you're essentially restricting the full amount.
Correct, alright.
So this is somebody we're gonna hire for, if all goes well.
This is a move to two, two.
For September.
Right.
Alright.
This is not the right, because we're not.
You just need to move this. You just need to move the amount.
Okay, so Tom put a motion on the table, and Lydia seconded it. So I'd like to vote against it, so we can do the correct motion.
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you very much. We've withdrawn the motion. We're back to what we're doing right now. Okay. It doesn't matter. Someone just hits, there you go, Tom.
There you go, Tom.
Okay.
Oh, so I should read this motion?
It's, read the mo, just read the motion.
Don't read the highlight.
Move that the Board of Education adopted 2019, 2020, public school budget in the amount of $70,670,269. Ooh, that's so exact. Which represents an increase of $1,520,717, or 2.2%.
A second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
All those opposed?
Great, great anticipation.
Thank you very much. So we are putting that budget forward, and we will present that. That is the budget we will present at the public hearing on April 2nd.
Correct.
At 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
And Henry James.
Are you doing a full presentation again at that point in time?
We will do the full presentation
Similar to what we presented to the new members.
At the, at the Simsbury Public Library.
Yeah, that's the first, first time we've done the public hearings there. It's new.
You will get the sheet back. Can we please hand this back to our secretary?
Yes. Yes.
While witnessing it being returned. Alright, so our meeting, our budget meeting will be at the public library.
Board of Finance public hearing on both budgets for operating and capital.
On all over town.
Yep, 6 o'clock.
All over down, ready.
Okay.
All the signs.
Alright.
And we will send out, as you mentioned before, after this meeting later in this week, a summary to our parents and community members on where we are with the budget. We will include the memo of the Board of Education regionalization.
Excellent.
Okay.
Now we, moving on to our last report, we're getting a report on the equity update.
Great.
We're at with, ooh, we keep hitting the mics. I'm so sorry, Mrs. Noble.
Okay. So I am going to initiate the conversation tonight, and Sue's gonna help me with providing more detail on some of the building block work that's moving forward, which has been real instrumental thus far in the work of the district, which has been, which has been great. But coming out of the public audience at the last Board of Education meeting at Simsbury High School, a great deal of input and feedback, along with, as I've shared with the board before and I shared with the public that evening, I've had an opportunity to have a significant number of conversations with parents in the community, stakeholders outside of the community, both in person and in phone, and have received great suggestions, feedback on not only how we handled the situation, but things we really need to think about as a community and as a school district moving forward. So in that spirit tonight, I wanted to identify some of the themes that were consistent across all the audiences that we talked to and some of the work that we plan moving forward. So one thing that came through from adults, from students, from staff members, was a need to really take a deeper look at our curriculum. And Sue's gonna provide some details to that in a moment with a curricular audit. Professional development, certainly for our faculty and staff, and for our administrative team. Recruitment and hiring practices was a theme across all audiences as well. Obvious the fact that we are underrepresented with minority hires in our district. And the last two, really taking a hard look at subgroup student performance across all areas, and what are our practices and programs that support and structures that support our students. And messaging, students really having a desire to be a part of these conversations, not having to sit back and have presenters speak at them, but really have an opportunity to roll up their sleeves and be part of the solution. Were, were consistent themes that, that came across. So then we talk about our audiences. You know, where are we gonna take this work, and how are we gonna begin to move it forward? So certainly our students, our staff, our district leadership team, and then the greater Simsbury community, and that's through the community of care. So what Sue is gonna do is, she's gonna work through each of those areas and talk about some of the initial steps we've made. We provided, I sent this last week, it's an initial document that supports and kind of highlights some of the work. And one thing I wanted to, before passing it off to Sue, kind of really make the point of interest in terms of timing and systems and structures. We talk a lot about our system of continuous improvement in this district. And we are currently in the process of approving four new Board of Education goals, and the actions and the data points that we're gonna use to evaluate our work moving forward. This equity work needs to absolutely be embedded in that same accountability structure that we have, that we report out on periodically throughout the school year. And this work, as you can see, fits very well in strategic goal number two, that you've already looked at, which really focuses on creating that inclusive, responsive environment for our adults and our kids. So Sue is basically gonna bring to life on the slides what's already here. I think it would be great for the people in the audience.
Yeah, does anyone in the audience, do we have, can anyone, would anyone like to share, so we can give them to the audience? Here, we can give mine.
Give them yours.
So I think, Sue, we're on to you.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Terrific. So first, I want to start with students. And as Matt had shared, these four main audiences, but what we clearly heard from students, from staff, from community members, is that we need to hear more from students and incorporate their voice. We also have to provide students the non-opt-out opportunities to become a part of this work. So at the beginning of last year, actually, the high school started on their journey to look at some of these themes and some of these concerns. And we partnered with the Discovery Center, which has now been renamed as the RE Center, the Racial Equality Center. And we were really impressed with their knowledge and skill, and particular focus on students, on kids. So we have engaged a kind of new level of our work with RE Center to do a couple of things. First, we've had many students, staff members, community members that have said, we want in. We want a part of this work. We are passionate about it. So we are going to be using those community members, students and faculty, as facilitators. And they will be facilitating, again, a larger audience of all students to talk about issues of equity. And I'm gonna show you how they're going to do that. Now that they, they actually met with these very impassioned students, community members and faculty members last week. And some of them, faculty and students in particular, have already participated in professional development around having courageous conversations regarding difficult issues. So now that we've established some facilitators, the RE Center is going to partner with us to provide three very specialized focus groups. Ones of male students of color, one of female students of color, and the third for students who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or their allies. And from there, develop very specific vignettes that they will use to increase the capacity of our students to understand what the human experiences look like in Simsbury High School regarding these issues of equity. So it's a multi-step process. It is one that we are going to continue throughout the remainder of the year. But we're looking to conduct these facilitated sessions, which would be a pairing of student and adult facilitators among students through April and May. Probably more likely towards that May timeframe, but that's when that will occur. So by the end of May, you will have provided students this initial experience of being a part of the larger equity conversation at Simsbury Public Schools.
All students, underlined, all?
All students will be a part of that, yes.
All high school students.
All high school students. Questions on the students before I move on to staff? Okay, so with faculty and staff, again, coming from the theme that we understand that we require some more professional development around the issues of equity. We started, as you may recall, with a full day, professional development day last Friday. And one of those sessions was a repeat for making sure that all faculty and staff had some background knowledge around the experience, again, of our LGBTQ students. We also had some sessions, these were sessions of choice, around culture and around diversity, that teachers can opt into. So that was one piece that has already occurred. The second is that we really believe that all of our faculty need a foundational knowledge of implicit bias. And what that implicit bias, what we bring, what biases we bring to the table as educators, and how we respond as educators in the classroom environments to our students. So we are working with CRAC, that's our, our local RESC. They are very well-versed. They have a variety of professional developments that can be tailored to our needs. So we're certainly in conversations with them. They provided to us an initial proposal of what the professional development would look like. We've come back and asked them to customize it a bit more to our needs. But the goal is that by the end of this school year, all staff members in all seven buildings will have participated in this implicit bias training. We've also had a phenomenal community member of Deacon Art Miller, who I'll get to some district work that he's done with our district administrators. But he has also said, I am happy to help and to participate in this work with faculty and staff as well.
So the students right now, in the, in the current, I know that this is just the start.
Yes.
Is focusing on the high school students.
Yes.
But the staff is also-
K-12.
Correct, Todd.
And the other piece of that, that we don't want to forget, is that we spend a ton of time in our elementary schools on character building and character programming. So, it's not as cold there. I think, you know, I mean, it's still being very active and very, there's stuff going on in those schools just because there always has been. So, we'll continue to proceed to include them in this work, but the high school is where we're starting with the students.
Absolutely. So, there'll be continuations about what those conversations may look like and what those experiences might look like for our middle school students and our elementary school students. Actually, the middle school, all of last year, worked with CRAC to participate in some implicit bias training already, so they'll be doing the next step regarding that. And we also had Deacon Art Miller come and speak with all students at the middle school last year.
He does it quite a bit.
He does.
And he has for years. But the other piece is the, hopefully, if we get, do this right, we'll be able to take some of the high school kids to go down into the elementary schools to do some of the work as we move forward, too.
Right. What we're talking about really is building capacity. We're building capacity among our students. We're building capacity among our faculty and staff, and we're using the wide variety of experiences and talents of our students, staff and community members, in order to do just that. So, that's faculty and staff. For district leadership, Deacon Art Miller came to a full-day meeting that we had as Simsbury administrators. Some board members also participated in that and did some work about, again, the biases that we bring, quite frankly, as a predominantly white educator staff, to the work that we do with students each and every day. So, that was, you know, certainly very powerful. I'm not sure if any board members want to comment on that in a minute. But we also attended Matt, myself, Georgia Roberts, who is one of the assistant principals at the high school, Gertrude Banks, who is our choice liaison. She's predominantly at the, at both the middle school and high school, and Maggie Seidel, who's the principal of Tooton Hills. We had a great opportunity through CAPS and CAEB to participate in this institute of equity, and what we did is engage in really equity-based activities. We each had to bring some data that we felt demonstrated in inequity within our school system and within our school district, and we were engaged in a variety of discussions to talk about, so what does this mean and what are potential next steps? So, that one exercise, again, is all building into what is our action plan overall that is embedded in our strategic goals and objectives.
Thank you.
Finally, the greater Simsbury community, and the vehicle for these conversations have really happened through our Community for Care. Certainly, I would want to say about two or three months ago, members of the Community for Care actually had some conversations with town officials about, how do we have conversations with each other, just in general, in the climate that we're facing today? And so, we had already formed a subcommittee to start generating ideas about how we address that as a community, and we broadened the scope of our mission. You know, prior to this, the Community of Care really had been about providing resources around mental health, addiction services, but we were saying, okay, we're also a group that responds to community need, and we're seeing this as a community need. So, we already had a subcommittee in place. Then, after getting some feedback around how do we take these issues of equity to the greater Simsbury community, we thought, well, what a more appropriate vehicle than through the Community of Care. So, together, this subcommittee, it consists of about five of us from Community for Care, we interviewed, spoke with almost two dozen professionals whose skill set is really around this facilitation of difficult conversations around race and around equity. And we believe that it's somebody that has to have the specific skill set to be able to address concerns that are brought up and really help us to action plan. Among that, we had the opportunity, a gentleman by the name of Dion Lyons reached out to Matt in the midst of this. He's from the Department of Justice, and he said, you know, Superintendent Curtis, we have a community relations services division that was created back in the civil rights movement. We've actually been in place for a while, and there is about 100 across the nation, it was very good education for me, a community relations specialists, of which Mr. Lyons is one. And they have some very tried and true protocols to have conversations around the very topics that we're talking about, race inequity. So, after a lot of deliberation, a lot, again, after speaking with a lot of potential facilitators, at our last meeting, Community of Care, for Care said, "We would like the Department of Justice and partner with them to help us with our work." Another great aspect, it certainly wasn't the only decision-making element, but they provide these services for free. They're completely funded by the federal government. So, I'm, we're really excited about this because Thursday, Mr. Lyons is coming out to meet with the subcommittee. He sent some materials today about, this is how we plan to have this conversation. And I do want to share a little bit more about the structure, about what that would look like. Certainly, we would invite any community members that are interested, but we would also take very intentional steps to make sure that we have a diverse and representative sample of voice around the table. And the process starts off with, you actually put people together in homogeneous groups. Maybe that's your faith-based leaders, maybe that's your business leaders, maybe that's, you know, different community leaders with very specific group identity. And you start creating priorities based on those homogeneous groups. Then throughout the course of this protocol, of which takes four to five hours, so it's certainly a commitment, we also start to mix groups heterogeneously. And from that comes an agreed-upon prioritized list of what are some next action steps that we as a community might take. So, there's no predetermined outcomes, but the thinking is, if you have a diverse group representative of different thoughts, ideas, concerns, you come out with a very articulated action plan around equity. Part of this process is also developing a council, a spirit council, and their job is to see the community plan through. It's a level of accountability that comes. So, certainly, I can provide the board more of an update after this planning meeting that we're having Thursday, but we're really looking to have this greater community conversation in late April or early May, based upon Mr. Lyons' experience. He says it takes about a month to pull all of these pieces together, certainly, but again, it's a, it's a tried and true process that's been in place for decades, and we're really excited to partner with them, with the Community for Care.
So, that council, is that council pulled together at the end of the conversation?
It is. It is. Because you, you have, you know, different leaders that arise from a very developed process who say, yeah, I would like to be one of the representatives to see this work through and to hold us as a community accountable to what we said we wanted to do and what we wanted to prioritize.
And he is coming from Atlanta, but has ties to Connecticut, was originally from Hartford, I believe.
Yes, yes.
Correct.
He has a very interesting background.
Yeah.
So, that's the greater Simsbury community conversation.
Thank you.
Questions?
I just have, this is wonderful, first, putting this together, in my, in my business career, I'll try to do something new. We look for success models, see what we could learn from people that, or organizations that had been ahead of us, that had traveled the rude road before we did. I'm just wondering if there are any success models here in Connecticut for the development of these kinds of programs that we could learn from?
Thank you so much for asking that question. Neighbors right around us, actually, West Hartford has done some similar equity work, as well as Grandby. And so, we have been in contact with those administrators to talk about, how did this develop? What things would you do differently as you're embarking on the next steps of this work in equity? So, we have been in close conversations with them and taking leads about who can we partner with, who are some facilitators that we could speak with? So, yes, we are doing that. Absolutely.
Center for School Change is an organization as well.
You're listening to him. You're on it. Tracking our theme.
Yeah, really.
Just a couple of questions that hit me. One was, I feel like when I, as I was listening to sort of the student plan, are we missing Henry James in this? Are we, is there a plan to bring them in? Because we talked about the character developments at the elementary level, we're doing this work at the high school. I just want to make sure we're not missing the middle school.
I appreciate that, Susan. They, as I had shared last week, or last week, last year, they really started to delve into these issues on their own. They're at a slightly different place with their staff.
Okay.
Foundationally, meaning that they've already had some of the professional development that we're enrolling with the other schools.
Okay.
And again, having some of these wider conversations, certainly with Deacon Miller last year. So, for them, I think it's, what is the next steps in that work?
Okay.
And we're in conversations, certainly with Scott Baker, with Angelique Belmonte, to really customize it. We don't want to do things just to do them and check them off.
Right.
Right? We want to be very, very explicit, but to your point, no. We want to build capacity K-12, but thought the first step certainly should be with our high school students.
Okay.
And Art Miller has been going in there, don't forget.
No, I know Art's been there, but I just want to.
So, they've already started conversations.
Right. But I just wanted to kind of make sure.
No good point.
So, I'm thinking vertically, and so what I would love to see is high school students, Henry James students, and elementary students sort of coming together because you learn from each other so well. And I don't know what that exactly looks like, but in my mind, that's the best way to move it.
Without question, without question. You'll see at the bottom of this place here, that work will be expanded to the middle and elementary schools at a later date. Right? We don't want to get too ahead of ourselves.
Right.
We want to be able to respond to what the organic needs are there.
Yep.
But certainly, that is on our radar to make sure that it's all. We just want to do the work well and, again, not rush it or check it off the box. So, realistically, it made sense to make our first focus our high school students with the expectation that we would be expanding it later time.
Okay, agreed. And then one last thing. I wanted to ask Valerie, after kind of everything, what are you hearing at the high school around this?
Based on?
Just after our public hearing and sort of the work that's starting to, you know, are you hearing about this at the high school?
After the conversation, as well as from a lot of the students that came forward during that meeting, obviously, there was a huge conversation once a lot of the events surfaced, and of course, word spreads fast. So, there was a lot of very opinionated conversations in either direction. There were people from both sides. After the meeting and the board expressed their, you know, want to move forward with these issues, a lot of the students who were feeling apprehension towards talking about these issues were not feeling apprehension anymore. So, I do feel like the strides that the board is making are very much going in the right direction, and I think the students are very happy with the, you know, strides that we are taking or talking about taking. So, from a student's point of view, I think that we're very happy with what's been going on.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, I'm good.
I am, a couple of things. I, I think I, I'm going to tie what I say to Tom's questions. I think we have an incredible opportunity in front of us. We learned a lot several weeks ago, and I think this is a great start. We need to make sure that we don't just see the 2019s on the schedule, we see 2020s and see this part of a regular rotation and part of our culture. My hope is that a year from now, I'm not sure if that's too soon, when someone in another district asks the question that Tom asks, the first thing that they say is, "Simsbury is a model." We have a great opportunity to kind of become that model and to have something, to put something together that people will look to. One question that I have is, I don't know what's in the student handbook, and is there anything in the student handbook that could be added or enhanced to, to make sure that when every student gets this, it's right there? I think you sign that you've read the book, not that that necessarily changes anything, but it's just another point of saying, "This is acceptable behavior. This isn't, we're an accepting community." I'd love to see if we can make sure that that kind of gets, I don't know how often gets refreshed, but that would be a nice, a nice place to start.
Right.
And I also wondered if.
Public audience, FBI.
Yeah. Yeah.
I also wondered if.
We will get to it.
You'll have a minute.
And this was just, this just came to me as you were talking, so it's not a fully fleshed out thought, but, you know, would it be, would it be helpful at some point if people are interested to have Art Miller actually have a workshop with us so we can make sure that we understand the issues? You know, there were a lot of things that I learned that I was surprised about, and I learned that I, well, that I saw that I wasn't surprised about, but I just want to make sure I understand everything that we heard a couple of weeks ago, and he seems to be a good ref, resource.
We can certainly.
And this committee would be a good resource, too.
Yeah.
We can certainly look to organize that. Several board members had a chance when we did the kind of mid-year retreat to do that training with Art and with us, but we can look at rebooting that for sure. Absolutely. It was, I thought it was an outstanding session that we had, and I think it would be a great benefit.
Yeah.
Great benefit to board members. So, we can reach out to Art and coordinate that for sure. Do like a workshop.
Yeah. And I do like the fact that we're starting with some focus and with the, was it the RE?
RE Center.
RE Center. And making sure that LGBTQ students who also expressed some concerns.
Right.
Make sure that we, we also keep thinking about other groups.
Yes.
That we want to make sure that also feel like, you know, we're not being.
We're an accepting community.
Yes, it's everybody. So, and I, I think this was great. You did a great job.
Inclusive and responsive, right?
Inclusive and responsive.
That's right.
Just, as Todd, I just want to second Todd. I think we have an opportunity here. I just, as we go through this pro, and I, let me back up. I think we have an opportunity, and I really appreciate, I think, to really address this conversation. We knew, we need to know how to have the conversation. So, I appreciate all the foundational work that you're doing. But what I would like everybody to keep in mind as we go forward is, I would love to measure this. I just don't want to have conversations and let it go away. So, as we go through this process, if there's metrics that we can look at a year, five years down the road, I think it would benefit us. Whether it's, you know, I keep coming back to the student surveys and those questions that keep, that are burned in my brain about respect. I think that's part of us. You know, the hiring, obviously, is an easy one, but just if there's some metrics along the way that we can keep in mind.
And that's what, and Sue said it multiple times, she doesn't want to dot i's and cross t's. She wants to do the thoughtful.
No, absolutely.
So, it's true.
That point on the development of the strategic plan right now that we're in.
Right. That's important.
We can come back with metrics in different areas.
That's really important.
Keep in mind, yeah.
Yeah, and our strategic goal plan, right, we have a category as measured by. So, we're going to take these actions, we have these objectives.
How will we know?
How are we going to know? Right, at the end of the day.
And some of things are going to work and some things aren't, too. And so, you always got to be, it's got to be fluid.
And I did want to make mention, because Sue mentioned it, Tom, Tara and I were able to go to the implicit bias training with Deacon Art and administration, and Deacon Art has a unique way of kind of cutting to the chase. And. Oh, he does, indeed. He has been very gracious in donating his time to us and helping us all figure out our next steps. So, a huge thank you to Deacon Art, and I think it was great that some of us could be there. But to Todd's point, I think it would be even better if all of us could have a part in that.
Sure.
Because I think that would be a great thing.
And I, and I would like the committee to come, too, because I'd like to know the people.
Agreed, yes.
I'd like to know all those people to be there to help explain. If we do a workshop, I'd like to know where they're at and what they're doing when we plan it.
Oh, sure. Without question.
Yeah.
Without question. As those details become ironed out, certainly, we will inform the board and the larger community.
That's great. And over time, you know, I would like whoever our facilitators end up being at the high school and along the way, I'd like them to know that we're as invested in this as we can be, and that this isn't just us kind of saying what we're supposed to say or what everyone thinks we should say. We, I think pretty strongly, all have reacted to this and, and we're very much invested in making sure this work is moving.
Absolutely.
I also remember that you had mentioned something from a student point of view of the non-opt-out for the students, because I think it's important that every student is involved with this. I know you had mentioned adding something to the student handbook. It's one thing to provide them with the materials, but it's another thing for them to take in the material. And I think a lot of the students, especially at the high school, when you give them the student handbook, it's one of those things where you get it every year and someone, they're, okay, great, I got the student handbook, but it's actually like the going-through. But it's actually like the going through if we're adding articles into tolerance or conversely intolerance. I think it's something that the students need to be aware is there and it has to go through. Because if you just give them the handbook, it's going to be one of those things where they either quickly flip through it or they get shut off to the side and it isn't even taken in at all. So I think the non-opt-out is something that's necessary.
My intention wasn't to have it replace anything else.
And then put a banner across the front of the school.
Yeah.
Any place we can make sure that we remind people is something-
It's policy language you're looking through there.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And so there's, yeah. Anybody have any other questions, thoughts?
I just want to have one other comment. It's about a little thing, but it means a lot. At least it does to me, and I just want to point it out. There's a symbol that you, that we will see. And if you look in the back bumper of my wonderful new car, the symbol is there. It's a sticker and it's a blue background. And there's a gold equal sign overlaid on that blue background. And that, that is an equality symbol. And I've seen it on shallow cases. I've seen it on cars. I've seen it on walls. And I think it's a wonderful little device to bring attention to this idea of equality. I just throw it out there. Is there any way we can use that symbol as part of this program? It's a very famous symbol now nationwide.
Yes, it is.
Wasn't that a symbol for a specific organization?
I don't know where it comes from, but you, there is an organization that sells these things.
Yeah.
One night you can buy them.
Coexist. There's a lot, there's a lot of great symbols that are out there that-
Something that the Youth Advisory Board at Simsbury High School had started two years ago was every year the Youth Advisory Board comes up with their like yearly motto kind of thing. And that's what we try to get through to the students. And last year it was unity starts with you. And as much as we had hoped it had gone farther, I think it did hit home with a couple of people. And I think it was really important. We tried to do like presentations or sharing stories of unity. And it, again, it wasn't as accepted as we had hoped, but I mean, it did, a lot of kids did respond with some things that were really important. And I'd like to revisit that, because I think that, especially now that all of these events have occurred, bringing that back as either a rehash of the same motto or bringing it through a different direction, like possibly a sticker or something like that. Revisiting it, I think would be a really smart idea.
We've got a good art department over there. We can do something cool.
Very true. Mural department, call it Mr. Holsman.
Well, Mr. Holsman. He'd be into it.
Bimbos go along.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
You just got to be careful. It's associated with something.
Yes.
Right. We have to make our own. It's not, making our own is a great idea. Anyone else? All right. With that, I will open up the floor to a public audience again. So who, would anyone like to speak? Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
We talked about the student handbook. I sat down with student council about two, not, not three weeks ago with Andy, the principal of Simsbury High School. And they were adamant about making changes to the student handbook and making sure-
Policy language.
Policy language and making sure that their stuff was highlighted and given out to the students.
Highlighted.
They're hot on that. And they're hot also. Big discussion about words that are being used in the school system.
So are you working with them on that?
Yeah. Andy's kind of moving me in.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, we're moving along. And probably next week, we'll sit down and get some kind of hands-on project.
Yep.
So get that going. She'd spoken about teachers' ability to opt-in and opt-out in some of the different PDs.
Oh, this was the full-day PD.
Full-day PD.
So the two sessions that were facilitated by CRAC were around LGBTQ issues, and those were opt-in. I'm sorry, those were mandatory for all high school staff. There were other, there were dozens of choice sessions on a variety of topics, diversity being one of them in a couple of sessions. And those were opt-in. That's what I meant by that.
Opt-in?
Yes.
So in other words, all the teachers would have access to those mandatory basis to some extent or not?
For the LGBTQ sessions, yes, for high school staff.
Right.
But what we're talking about here, which is not opt-in, will be the implicit bias training that will happen for all faculty in all seven schools.
And administrators.
And staff.
And then I think someone that I mentioned on the board as far as metrics are, so in other words, with the teachers, in other words, we want to see what's, how they feel going in. Maybe the questionnaire going in and the questionnaire coming out. Where they are, is it looking to actually quantify? Has their mindset been changed?
Oh, can you wait one second? Can you try to get your mic? Or can you actually, can you come up? I think you look fabulous.
So like I was saying, again, with the teachers and the metrics that you've spoken about, just having a starting point where their mindset is prior to going through these PDs and then an endpoint to see that there has been some type of mental change or, you know, bias change in how they, their perspectives on how they're going into these situations.
Great idea. What's your baseline?
Exactly.
What's the intervention? What's post?
Is it working? And, you know, and also just in finality, just a picture of what you guys expect? What is it going to look like when we get there or halfway there, you know?
One of the, and that's a great point. That's like setting the vision, right? And one of the things at this workshop that Sue and I had an opportunity to talk about, and we're going to bring the concept back to the board later in April, is this Equity Council. We're a group of people inclusive of some community members, staff, a diverse community that works on vision. It works on exactly what you're talking about. And they kind of shepherd and work towards that cycle of improvement and on those goals. Some of the model districts, Tom, that we've talked to, all have a separate council. You know, much like you do in an organization and other work, right? When we do facilities and enrollment work, not to get off the pin, but you have a specialized group that works with that in terms of creating the vision and creating the metrics. So that's something we're going to be bringing back to the board.
And then finally, not to go back, because I know you guys did all your budgeting and everything, but you said that they have this director in Glastonbury that has, is an established position.
West Hartford.
Was it West Hartford? So I mean, maybe start to think about how are we going to come up to fund some type of director down the road?
That's our intention.
Because we're looking for longevity with all of this. It's not just, you know.
Exactly.
Yeah, we're on board. Thank you.
That's what we're hoping for.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to say?
I do.
Okay, please. My name is Lyra, up a chair again? Thank you very much.
So I'm not going to repeat some of the same questions. My name is Sharon Thomas. I live in Simsbury, 42 Bretonwood Drive. So great to hear the update. I wanted to go back to a couple of things. One, we talked about the student handbook. I do believe, I agree with that. But I also think that we have to start with the mission of Simsbury Public Schools. So I think that our, and I'm hoping that as you're looking at the strategy that that looks at. Because I think if it doesn't start there, then all the work that we're doing won't make a difference. And-
The vision of the graduate.
That's right. That's right. That's right. And then, and it also helps for not only the students, but the teachers, the coaches who are touching our kids, as well as the folks in the lunchroom. It touches everyone. And everyone will know that this is the culture that we're looking for. So I think that that's really important. Question on updates. You talked about the work that you're doing and updates being made to the community. So I don't have children in the school, but I care about what's happening to our kids. Because I'm part of the community and have been for years. So how am I getting those updates?
You can sign on to our listserv and be a part of those updates.
If you go to our web, Simsbury High School website, there is a place to sign up for communications.
Okay.
And then you'll get them.
So you'll get everything that we-
And they'll get mailed to you.
Would be the easiest way.
Either, or you go to our website regularly, because we'll be-
And you, you want to be selective about your, there's a lot of emails that will come.
Right. So-
You don't need every school.
No. No, no, no. But I-
But if you get the high school, you're pretty good.
But I do want to get them.
Sure.
Because I'm, I was there and that's part of why I'm here.
Thank you.
And so, because I also believe that whether we have kids in the school or not, this touched a lot of us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And so it's important that as a community, that we see that things are happening.
Yes.
And that we, like you said, a year from now, two years from now, we don't want to hear like we did at that meeting, this was in place years ago and now it fell apart. And that, we don't want to be there.
No.
So I, and I do agree that this is the opportunity for us to showcase and make our town better. But we've got to be able to measure, because everyone's going to say, you know, how do you know you've improved?
Right.
So I think that that's also really key.
Sue, can she join the Community for Care?
I was going to say, how do we post Community for Care information? Is it on the Board of Selectmen's website?
It's a town website, but it's-
It's through the town, certainly. I can absolutely, Ms. Thomas, get you that information if you're interested in being a part of that group.
Yes. So Cheryl and I have had email discussions.
Oh, good. Okay.
Right.
So there you go.
But you can also get information on what they're doing-
Oh, yeah.
From the website.
Yes. So, so I will follow up on that one, because we are going to do. And I think, I think other than that, I, you know, great.
Well, thank you very much for coming. And thank you for all of your input. I think our community is only as good as those of us who are willing to come to the table and talk about how to make it better.
And we can't sit in our pajamas.
Well, you can't, you know, if it's not, you know, I'll give you it out if you want. You can come in your pajamas. I would never question it.
My two sons may beg to differ, but-
It's all good.
My name is Carl Meyer, 7 Deepwood Road, Simsbury. I'm going to keep it cool, Matt. Don't worry.
I'm not worried.
All right. I came to, maybe just a little. I came to, I don't really like to talk in public.
You have three minutes.
And I know, I know. I might ask for a little leeway, because I'm talking about life and death. I agree with Jeff and with Tom Frank before on the issue of safety and security. And I'm not necessarily here to push for anything, but just to, I've never come in person. I've written all of you. You all know me in different capacities. I thought it was time, being that you had a long discussion about it before, that I reveal myself. Safety and security is literally life and death. Okay? And I wrote my notes while I'm sitting here, so I haven't practiced it. It's kind of been my part-time job here for eight years. As everyone who knows me knows, I'm super passionate about this issue for good, for good reason. We're dealing with children, children's lives, life or death, them living or dying, our children. The term safe, it's not black or white. We're never safe or not safe. In a car, we're safer, because we wear our belt. We're safer than that, because we have an airbag. It's never black and white. It's shades of gray. How safe are we? When I, if I asked, and I did ask eight years ago when we arrived, I asked other parents, you know, how safe do you, are the schools? Almost everyone said, I think we're pretty safe. We're in good shape. I think the schools do a good job. That's eight years ago, 12 improvements ago, before Newtown. Meanwhile, eight years ago, there were doors propped open. No one thought anything about it. But we were, you know, safe. Simsbury, safe. We're only as safe as we are because of myself, Burke, Neil, Sue before that. Now, I don't get paid at all. Burke wears two other hats. Neil wears two other hats. All of it gets done quietly, behind the scenes. We've done so much. We've done the job that you need, the Director of Security, that has been pushed for a number of years now. I have a background in it. I have a background in facilities, engineering. I used to manage projects like the Henry James renovation. I did that for pharmaceutical companies. And I have a background in counterterrorism. And you only realize how vulnerable you are when you think about it, when you really think about it and let yourself think about it, because it's not any fun to think about. It's the last thing anybody wants to think about. We've done background checks.
Carl, I'm just going to tell you, you have three minutes, so I'll give you some leeway, but-
Right. Life and death of children.
I understand completely.
And I, I'll have a few more lines, and this is the end of your meeting, so please.
Great.
Please. Background checks, window film, window screens, vestibules, fobbing, yellow vehicle gates, about six others, almost all invisible, but all doing a great job in combination. I'm really nervous speaking, so just please, just give me. The latest, you need a guy or a woman who sees this right away. When my kids started with Henry James, I saw that after school hours, the school was wide open. I was like, oh, my God. How could this be? There's 100 kids in the school. There's eight clubs. There's teachers. There's after-school work. 100 people in the school. It was wide open. I pushed for that to change. It did change just recently. You need a guy who sees it right away. As soon as you roll up to the school, like, oh, my God. And I got that changed with the help of Neil. Neil did all the legwork, of course, but that was just the latest of the 12 or 15 improvements that we've made. We're only safe until we're not. There were 50 killed in Orlando, 50 killed in Las Vegas, 50 killed in New Zealand. Just this week, three suicides, two in Parkland, one in Sandy Hook. My background and experience leads me to believe that until we have a big event, bigger than Newtown, in a school in this country, like 50, that's when the tide will turn. That's when the whole country will say no more and will actually mean it, because no one means it right now. That'll be our World Trade Center, our 9/11 event. And I grew up in New York, and I was in the Pentagon on 9/11, so I know that this can happen. And I lived through the anthrax attacks and the sniper in DC. This stuff can happen. I believe when we have an event like that, that's what will turn the tide in this country, in this town. I'm super appreciative of what Matt has done since he hit the ground here. Neil has done phenomenal work, Sue before him. Burke was carrying the whole load before that. So Matt, maybe it's time, if the security director is going to be delayed, maybe it's time to look at the third SRO again, share that with the police department. Maybe that's another alternative.
So I don't know when you're-
I watched the whole thing, yeah. You wanted to delay it like six months, and I'm not here to fight that.
We didn't. We didn't.
Okay.
They voted to keep it in.
Okay. Board of Finance has the final say, I suppose.
The Board of Finance has the number, not what we keep in or don't keep in.
Okay. So-
This board is moving forward the budget with that position in it.
Okay. So I was driving. That's the part I missed.
I didn't want to cut you off.
I didn't even need to come here. But I just really want what I've said tonight to sink in.
We're very aware and we've worked really hard.
I know.
And we thank you for that. And we thank you for your coming to speak to us, for sure. But we, you don't, you're singing to the choir here, my friend, because we all believe, like you believe, that security and safety of our students is our priority.
And we don't want the big one to be us.
Well, that is without, doesn't even need to be said.
Guys who approach our schools are cowards. They will approach the one that is least,
so-
will give them the least trouble.
We appreciate your input and your interest and your passion on this. And we feel the same, that safety is definitely a priority. And I think we have a really great op, our kids are feeling safe in schools and our teachers are feeling safe, so that's our direction.
There's a difference between feeling safe and being safe.
I know, but I'm trying to get-
And I know we're approaching there. I'm really grateful for what we've done collectively.
All right. Thank you very much, Carl.
I'm not here to complain.
We appreciate that.
I'm here to say this is the logical next step.
We've moved forward with it and we have asked for that ourselves.
Okay.
So that is in our budget to keep the Director of Security for all the work that they need to do.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you very much. On that note, did you have something you'd like to say, Valerie?
I have one more thing to add that I forgot in my report. I'm so sorry.
I don't need to.
Okay. So I mentioned the Youth Advisory Board earlier.
How could you have forgotten anything I did?
I mentioned the Youth Advisory Board very briefly with the unity starts with you. This year, we had chosen make the right choice. And I forgot to mention that we have been implementing this during our connect periods at the high school. It has taken a focus on substance abuse. Like you had mentioned, you wanted to get a more focus on drugs and things. Our first week, we started with social interactions and how making the right choice in those situations can lead to better outcomes for the community. We then continued the second week with vaping and the perils of vaping, the ingredients of vaping, the, you know, future consequences. We then continued with drugs on just last Wednesday. And then, since we have SAT testing, it's going to probably get pushed to Thursday. But our final one is about alcohol abuse. And I think that these are really important. We give it to the students in the form of cahoots, because it was a fun thing, but it still allowed them to be informed. And I thought I would want to mention that, because I think it's really important with the whole substance talk.
Excellent. It is very important. And it's nice to know that that work's being done. Thank you so much.
Who's the "we" you're referring to?
So I've actually had the huge honor of being part of the Youth Advisory Board for three years now.
Oh, the Youth Advisory Board.
Oh, the Youth Advisory Board.
It's a group of usually about four students who talk with community members. We have someone who comes from the rec department, someone who comes from the library. We have social workers who are part of it, and we have our school resource officers and our school social workers. And that entire board makes up this board that ends up putting out these implementations into the school system every year to inform the high school students of any given issue, depending on what we think is the right choice. And then the social department ends up sending us funds through a grant in order to implement these things. We are giving away gift cards this year to the top placers for the cahoots in order to kind of give that incentive so students are not only learning about the, you know, perils of substance abuse, but now they're also getting an incentive for informing themselves.
Thank you.
Sounds great. That was very important information. Thank you very much. I would entertain a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.